Are we on air? We're on air. I'd like to call the May 8th meeting of the Planning Commission to order, and I'd just like to make a quick announcement. The water seems to be off in City Hall. If you need to use a restroom, there's a restroom on the side of the building towards the parking lot on the east side. And if you come up to speak to us, there is a microphone and a chair right up here in the corner, and that's where you'd come to address us. So I would like to -- the meeting's called to order. Can we get a report on the posting of the agenda?
Let's see. Mr. Chair, we'll do the roll call first.
If you don't want to, be good.
Commissioner Donatell.
Present.
Commissioner Garner.
Present.
Commissioner Hudson.
Present.
Commissioner Song.
Present.
Vice Chairman Lutzey.
Here.
Chair Woods.
Here. Thank you. Now that we get the posting of the agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, May the 8th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Okay, thank you. Are there any revisions from the commissioner to the agenda as seen no revisions, we'll move forward. We'll move to -- can we have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's been passed. The agenda's accepted. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar, non-public hearing items, and items of general interest within the subject matter of the commission. If you wish to speak on items, numbers 4A, this would be your time to come up and speak to the commission. Comments at a public hearing item may be made at this time is presented. Please note the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes is allowed to each speaker. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the commission? Can you come forward and state your name? You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Commission members. My name is Mario Gonzalez, 30875 Date Palm Drive, Cathedral City, California. I'm president and CEO of GHA Companies. We're a development group that currently doing some work over at the project known as Vibe on the corner of Farrell and Portola. That development has two different type of product types. One is condominium. We're doing a single-family residential. And our request was to get some consideration to -- we have, we have single-family homes and kind of a shared easement use to our neighbors, but they are single-family, they are freestanding. And this was a project that went through all the, you know, PUD process, and I think at one time the density was even lower. It's been through a couple of different developments, but we're fortunate to be able to start building it out. We are opening our models the 18th of this month. And as we started developing the property, you know, we were getting, trying to get a good feel of how that side yard would work, because that side yard that we have is basically our most common area that we have. We don't have backyards or anything. And, you know, we were looking at possibly getting a couple of extra feet so that the pools could sit a little closer to that shared easement line than normal. And now that we've been able to, to build the properties, our models are about 95% the pools are in. And it just made a lot of sense for, for proper planning to try to go ahead and move them. And I know that, you know, we all go through a lot of, you know, the norm, and we have, you know, we have certain rules and regulations, and a lot of times, you know, we need to because they make sense. But we're always looking to try to, you know, be better by design. And I think that this request that we're asking has no effect on, on the neighbor. The neighbor already is aware that that is a, a common area, that it could be used by the adjacent neighbor. And we're asking that you kindly work with us and allow that to increase or decrease down to two feet from where it normally is. I think at five feet, Glenn, is that where it is? Yes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or something, if I may?
We may, if the item comes up, call you back up, but at this point, there's none. I'd like the comment, "better by design."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wanting to speak to the commission on a non-public hearing item on the agenda? There are agendas on the table over there. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We have no consent calendar today, so we're going to move to the first public hearing. But before we do so, I believe we have a recusal.
Yeah, I will be recusing myself from this matter for business reasons.
Okay, thank you very much. Give Commissioner Gardner a moment to leave the room as she recuses herself. And before we start with the staff report, can I just have a show of hands of people in the audience that are expecting to speak on the topic of Colony 29? Okay, so I see two people that want to speak, which means we'll need to reopen the public hearing. Okay, can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. As you mentioned, this is a public hearing, continuation of a hearing that the Planning Commission conducted on April 24th, 2019. So this is a request from Johnston Family Trust, doing business as Colony 29, for a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from a state residential to medium-density residential for a portion of the property, a negative declaration under SEQA, and a conditional use permit to allow kitchens in the units, the hotel units located at 137 South Takwitz Drive. So as I mentioned, the Planning Commission reviewed this, this request at the previous meeting, and it was a continued hearing. The Planning Commission may decide to reopen the public hearing if you choose to accept additional testimony. At that meeting on the 24th, the Planning Commission wanted staff to provide to you conditions of approval that were part of a previous project called Infusion Beach Hotel. If you remember, that hotel is located on North Palm Canyon Drive, and it was operating as an outdoor music venue with outdoor music in their pool area. So there were several extensive conditions that were assigned to that approval, and the Planning Commission wanted us to provide those to you. So when your packet that was given to you were the actual conditions of Infusion Beach, in the, the first memo that was sent, these conditions, staff felt were relevant to the case at hand before the Planning Commission today. And I'd like to briefly summarize them in case some of the audience members have not been able to review them. So one of the conditions would be, as a noise attenuation measure, the applicant shall be required to install a noise monitoring system, and there's a specific model called the Ryon NL42 or similar, capable of monitoring sound levels at the property line adjacent to the event space. So as we mentioned earlier in the last hearing, in the slide that's before you, this shows the Colony 29 compound, which includes a cluster of vacation rentals that cannot operate as a vacation rental according to the new ordinance. So that is one of the reasons why they're here today, to go as a hotel. And you'll see at the bottom of the slide, the green area is the event line where they currently have ceremonies, events, corporate meetings, and so on. So this sound system that is proposed shall be capable of monitoring noise once each, throughout the event, the system shall be capable of logging data to internal and external memory for reporting purposes, so that the system will be able to keep track of the noise that is conducted on the site. There shall be a sound level meter. The meter shall be calibrated at a recommended regular interval. In the event that there's a noise complaint, the project applicant shall provide the noise level measurement data to the city of Palm Springs, so that we can verify that their system also registered a noise violation. In addition, the permanent noise monitoring solution described above shall be installed as part of the music sound system to actively enforce the noise levels when the music sound system is in use. Subwoofers are not to be included in the outdoor amplification or music system, and the speakers are to be oriented inward and downward on the site so as to minimize sound impacts on adjacent properties. Other conditions that are included in your conditions of approval state that the event breakdown or tear down of an event shall be limited to Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. So this would not allow them to remove event equipment on Sundays, so it's more of a quiet time for the neighborhood. And a last condition would be the Planning Commission shall review the CUP at a public hearing in 12 months from the effective date of the general plan amendment to monitor and see how everything went over the year. So in your staff report, there are new conditions of approval that incorporated these measures, and the Planning Commission may choose to add or subtract or modify if you'd like. I would like to mention that in your packet, there are some additional information that was provided to you today. Let me go down to some of those slides. First off, I'd like to show you this slide. This is a new slide that shows the current general plan amendment designations. The top slide is the current situation where the Colony 29 is designated as a state residential. And the second slide, the lower slide, is what will this new action will incorporate into the MDR. And you'll see that there is high-density residential around this, and it also continues on the MDR, which is to the south of the property. So in your additional information packet, there is an exhibit that shows a noise wall that the applicant has built that is about 24 feet from the neighbor's property to the south. It's that red line. And it runs about 60 feet along the, the property line, and there are photographs of it that were handed out to you today. And in the photograph, you'll, you'll see a shorter wall, and then you'll see a tall brown wall. That is the new wall that was built. It's about eight feet tall. And then we also showed the distance to the condominiums, which are to the east of the property, and that is about 200 feet. So once again, in the photographs, this shows a little, the lower wall is a decorative wall, and then behind it is the taller wall that is acts as a noise barrier. So Chair, that concludes my report. The, the environmental consultant is here if you have additional questions based upon the negative declaration that was prepared and reviewed by the Planning Commission at the previous meeting.
Thank you, Glenn. Are there questions of staff? Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at the, this image, the aerial photograph.
I don't think your mic is on.
And I'm looking at.
Doug, I don't think the mic is on. Oh, is it? Okay.
Pull it towards you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm noticing a discrepancy on this photograph. I'm just looking at the lawn surface relative to the pavement, and I'm noticing a right angle, you know, a sharp corner, if you will. And I'm not seeing that on the aerial photograph. Are they, am I missing something?
So the aerial photograph was probably taken two years ago from our GIS system.
Okay.
And since then, the taller wall has been built. The last time I was on the property, which is about a year ago, the lower wall was there, the taller wall has been added. And I haven't even seen the taller wall, but the applicant is here, and he may be able to answer that question.
Good. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Lutzey?
Hi there. I just wanted to confirm that the noise attenuation measures that are being proposed now are identical to those that were for the other project. I mean, I tried to compare them, but it wasn't obvious to me that they're the same.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and respond to that question. I was the one who worked on those conditions for Infusion Beach. You've got to keep in mind that we've got two slightly different uses. Infusion Beach is a concert venue, and it's something that's going to be more continuous during the, the week. This is only on occasion that they do special events here at this property. So what we've done is we've tailored those conditions. We've kept the important things in there in terms of being able to record the sound continually and being able to print that out, the limitation on the subwoofers and the sound limiting equipment. So we've taken what are the most essential components and the most important components from Infusion Beach, and then tailored them to the specific operating conditions here for Colony 29.
Is there anything about a sound limiter in the current?
Yes, we've included that in the conditions for Colony 29. So the equipment itself has to have a sound limiter. So that means that whatever DJ who was brought in can't then turn the sound up higher.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donatell.
Regarding the two walls, I'm looking at a photograph that looks like it may be an entry to the event space, and I see a sort of a bamboo facing on the double doors, and then a wall on either side which looks similar in height. Is there behind that another wall?
So if you look at the bamboo farther back behind that, you'll see a brown.
I do see that.
Okay, so that is the sound wall. That is about eight feet tall, where the bamboo is about five feet tall.
Right, significantly taller. And does that go around the entire property?
It was described to me that it runs 60 to 70 feet, and that has returns on the side that go back to the, the neighbor's wall.
Because there's dense residents in back of that, correct?
Right. If you look at, at this image.
So the wall runs along here and then returns to shield these neighbors.
And where, then, so where is there no wall? I mean, there's obviously the lower, perhaps lower, but the.
I'll have to have the applicant describe exactly how, the location of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions of staff? So I have a question, City Attorney. There seems to be the audience, people in the audience who want to speak on this. How do I reopen the public hearing? Does it need to be a motion, or is it a chair prerogative?
Reopening the public, Mr. Chair, reopening the public hearing would be the chair prerogative. It would also be important to note that anyone who provided any written correspondence would also have to be part of the record as well. So if, you know, it'd be important to go back and check to see if anybody provided any letters after the public hearing closed, given that we're now affording people here an opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. So I'll take the. Chair, there, there are several written letters that were included in your. Okay, so I'll take the prerogative to reopen the public hearing at this point. There are letters in our packet that have come in, and I would ask, is the applicant present? And does the applicant want to speak? Can you come on up? And you'll have 10 minutes.
Hello. Kelly McLean here on behalf of Dave Johnston for Colony 29. I want to answer a few of the questions. We did review the sound restrictions, and everything that is listed there, we are comfortable with. We believe we've already implemented most of those. We've taken it a step further by creating a sound wall, which is what you have been asking about. Prior to this year, we did not have that. It was because of a complaining neighbor that we decided that it was important to try any measures to make her life better. And since adding that sound wall, it is, it's a movable sound wall. It comes up for the events. It does not, I'll, I'll go up there to show you, but it basically is right by the residential condominium apartments. We are surrounded by a hotel. So the, I'm just coming here.
Kelly, Kelly, take that one.
Sure. So as Glenn was kind of alluding to, we're surrounded by multiple different types of properties. We have a hotel right here, and then we have some units right here, an additional hotel here. On this side is residential homes. We have the Valeries behind us, the Willows, and then O'Donnell. So we have noise coming from a lot of places, not to mention over here, there's a tennis court. So we've got a lot of noise. What we did was we put the sound wall directly here to mitigate noise coming this way, and it's reduced our decibels about five. Five decibels is what we've been reading. We did institute, we did institute a noise level monitor that is there at the property that comes out on during events, and it can record the sound, and it can be provided to the city if they wish. I do want to be very clear that the reason why we are here is because Colony 29 can no longer operate as a vacation rental. Each parcel is, is a separate parcel owned by a different individual. You cannot apply for a vacation rental for different parcels. You also cannot have a cluster of homes be a vacation rental. So because of that, that has really forced us to come here to. So because of that, that has really forced us to come here to figure out how do we, how do we move forward. The event space really is a very minimal, a minimal concept that doesn't take place every single weekend. Majority of the time, it's a vacation rental where we have no complaints. It's very quiet. The people that rent there love the space. It's seven acres. It's a very large space that's contained for the noise. We do not have noise complaints. For the event space, we've taken great measures to reduce all impacts to the neighborhoods. We believe we've done a great job being good neighbors and doing everything we can to mitigate the noise, and we feel comfortable with these restrictions. And we believe we will be here in a year, and you'll be happy. I'm here to answer any other additional questions with regards to operations or things that aren't making sense with regards to the wall. There is an additional regular wall that's there across the entire property. We added that sound wall barrier to break up the noise, because it's not about really music. The thing that raises noise is people talking, people laughing, people clapping. That is not amplified and is allowed when you're there at the space when we have an event permit. What happens when you have 75 people there? People talking does raise the noise level, so just even having the sound wall breaks up that, and that's what's been really important and very helpful.
Thank you. We'll have you back up to answer questions. I'm sure, Kelly, thank you very much. I'd like to just take a moment. It was a continued item, so I did not read the item into the record. So let me read the item into the record, so we know exactly what we're talking about. It's Public Hearing Item 2A. It's the Johnson Family Trust doing business as Colony 29 for a General Plan Amendment to change the land use designation from estate residential to medium-density residential for a portion of the property. It's a negative declaration under SEQA and a conditional use permit to allow the site to operate as a seven-unit hotel located at 137 South Takwitz Drive in Zone R2. So I just wanted to take a minute to read that into the record. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak for or against this project? Please come forward and just state your name.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Good afternoon. My name is Dave Barron, 1800 Takwitz Canyon Way, Palm Springs. I'm just here to support the project. My firm holds a charitable event there every year, the Business Awards for the Valley, and it's just a fabulous property. I will say that I've attended probably, I don't know, 15 or 20 events there. I've been aware of the sound issues that the city had, and I've walked around the property during the events. And then since the, since more of the enhanced sound attenuation system's been in place, and all's I can say is that it appears to be a model program that can be used in other applications in the city where noise is an issue. I would want to recommend or compliment staff and Commission for coming up with this, the criteria that you're implementing for this use. I think it makes a lot of sense for properties like this, unique properties like this, that are going to be event spaces, and we want to keep these event spaces. It kind of makes it special for the town. You get some major, major celebrities and corporate folks coming to town, and as you know, when they come to town, they often fall in love with the town by properties here, et cetera. So I think you've come up with an excellent accommodation. I think it's a model sound attenuation system and the requirements that you've implemented. And I just congratulate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for Cairo?
Just state your name for the record.
Michael Braun from Grid Development. I was not prepared, but I'm definitely in full support of this project. And what I heard, the applicant has worked with staff. As you know, we own a hotel in Palm Springs. We have invested a lot of money in new retail and restaurant tenants, and we need more event spaces. That's the critical part to help the economy here locally, and especially to fill it outside the period of February 1st until June 1st. So not granting this approval, I think, would be a detriment to our economy and locally here, and also to our tax revenue. 70% of our tax revenue comes from our visitors. Spaces like this, accommodations, and the option to have events here will flourish our hotel rooms, our restaurants, and our local business. Very important. In addition, I live at San Bereston, the tennis club area. I've never heard a peep from that event space. I've been myself several times at events that I was invited there, and they go above and beyond to mitigate any noises or intrusions to the neighbors. If you all recall, we have the O'Donnell House, which is above the O'Donnell Golf Course. They are blasting their music every weekend from 6:00 until 10:30 exact, blasting it all over the tennis club area. I hear them every weekend. So if they're allowed to operate their wedding space up there, I think that sets precedence, and you should extend the same to this property, which is not playing music until 10:30 in the morning, at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak? Seeing nobody in the audience, does the applicant want to come back up? Kelly, would you come back up? And you have two minutes for rebuttal, and I'm sure there'll be questions. So I assume you have no rebuttal at this point. Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, so is there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Donahue.
I have a question again regarding the walls. So the wall is the red.
Yes.
Horizontal line right there. Why did you do a dotted arrow from what looks to be sort of an amphitheater or an event space to the property line? Is that to the east?
Right. Staff did that to just give you an indication of distance between the condominiums on the east to the event space. So it's roughly 200 plus or minus feet.
I'm curious why, when you've got your most populated area to the east of the site, that the sound wall isn't there as opposed to where it is, which really abuts sort of the more hotel environment.
Because as you recall, we have one person who has been calling in, I don't want to use the word incessantly.
I understand, right, right.
But it starts at 2:00 PM on Saturday, and it goes all the way until Sunday, Monday. So what we were doing was, it's specific about one person.
Okay.
So we do not receive complaints from anywhere else. This was our way of showing good faith to the city that we will take additional measures to reduce any sort of noise, and it has to do with this one specific individual.
And you've had no complaints from the people who live in the higher-density.
No.
Development to the east of you?
No.
And are you drawing that line? Because what goes on, how much of the event is carried on in the area covered by the dotted line? Is that just open space that?
That's open space. That's where cars will be parked, not just basically any vendors that might park there.
Caterers would park there, and that's right.
We do not allow parking during the event for any guests. I think we addressed this at the last meeting. It's either shuttles that are provided from Kimpton, Hilton, or Uber-type of Lyft drop-off. So this is not activated at all. The blank dirt space is not activated at all during events. It's static.
Where does the event space actually then begin going east to west along that arrow?
So the green space where there's some, looks like some tables have been set up.
Right.
That is, that can be used for, like Dave was saying, it's used for a corporate event. It's a sit-down dinner spot. A ceremony would take place on the, there's another green space at the top here. It has a little mini amphitheater. A lot of brides like to get married there. And it's also been used for a brunch space, and it's simply grass with a small little amphitheater at the top. One of the commissioners was asking about the difference with the aerial. There has been concrete that has been added that has brought it in a little tighter since this was taken. That's simply because grass gets trampled on, and it's expensive.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions of the applicant? Kelly, I have one. Could you, and maybe I missed it when you were explaining, but can you explain this movable wall? I wasn't sure how, I thought it was a block wall. It's not a block wall, though.
It's a, it's a very large, like foam-piesced wall. So it goes up and it stays up during the events. That's pretty much it.
Okay. So you could move it elsewhere on the site or something?
It's liftable. Like when they were putting it together, they were painting it and to camouflage it like that, and then they put it in that area to stay there. Again, these spaces are not used at all Monday through Friday, really. We have very minimal events that take place. That's why I really wanted to implore you to know that this is really about the vacation rental aspect of the homes and the events that take place. We've done, you know, everything we can to make sure that it's as minimal impact for the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing no more questions of the applicant, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it's now amongst the commission. I do want to mention that there are two letters of support that are in the record that will now be part of the record as well. So at that point, any discussion? Hearing no discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I would move to adopt the staff report. I think that adding in these sound mitigation measures are very good. They were quite rigorous, I think, when we first put them in. They will apply here, and I'm satisfied that it's an important part of our tourist offerings to our visitors, and so I would now support the staff report and support the project. So I would move to approve the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second that with a comment of the fact that now Glenn has added the information about the secondary wall behind this sort of screen wall, and that is movable and is thick to absorb sound, and that's now part of the documentation of how they are mitigating the issues with the neighbor. So that's part of the document today as well. So in combination with that, I think we should move, I support your.
I would agree. I wasn't aware of that sound wall really until today, when Glenn brought it up.
Thank you, Glenn.
So that would be an added condition, that the sound wall is part of any future event? That is correct. We will note in the record that this includes the sound wall being in place during events. Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I hear no opposition. The motion unanimously passes. Congratulations. I, like I said last time, I think Colony 29 is a magical place, and I thank you very much for operating with neighbors and for continuing to operate. So thank you. Mr. Chair, if you'll just give us a minute for Ms. Garner to return. Great. Thank you. Let the record show that Commissioner Gardner re-entered the room as part of the meeting again. Thank you. We're going to move on to Public Hearing 2B, which is a request by the Palm Springs Modern Construction for the reversion of acreage of a previously subdivided final tract map 33162 for the development of 132-unit condominium complex located at the northwest corner of North Palm Canyon Drive and Tranway Road. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So if I may, I just want to take a brief moment to talk about revision to acreage, because this is not the type of items that comes before you often. And as a matter of fact, in my 15th year with the department, this is the first revision to acreage, the application that we are processing. So revision to acreage is usually the method that's used by which subdivided lands may be returned to large blocks of non-divided lands, and that is upon the recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council for approval. So in this particular case, this is for, the application was filed by Palm Springs Modern Construction, and the parcel in question is the Pedragal project that was approved by City Council in 2006 for the construction of 132-unit condominium complex. And as you all can see, this is the, this is the current look of that particular site at this point. So as you all can see, and as you know, the Pedragal project never proceed, because right about when the mass grading for the project took place, the recession hit, and I think that may have affected the ability of the owners at the time to proceed with the construction. Now, revision to acreage is governed by Chapter 9.66.040 of the municipal code. There are basic five criteria that has to be fulfilled by the applicants to, when submitting a request for a revision to acreage. So I enumerated those in your staff report. I also have them here. And I think chief amongst them is that there has to be evidence of title to the real property, and that evidence of the consent of all of the owners of an interest in the property, and that evidence that none of the improvement required to be made have been made within two years from the date the final map or parcel map was filed for record. Also, that evidence that no lots shown on the final map or parcel map have been sold within five years from the date such final map or parcel map was filed for record. And lastly, that a tentative map in the form prescribed by this chapter, which delineates dedications which will not be vacated and dedications proposed to be reversed. So when this application was filed, staff evaluated the application and all the documents that were filed along with the application, and determined that the applicant has met all these criteria. In the package that were given to the Planning Commission, it included a settlement agreement between the applicant and the owners of the property, which have some added conditions that the applicants will have to meet. All of those will be carried out by the time the final map that is being reverted is presented to the council. So based upon that, staff will be making a recommendation of approval by the Planning Commission that the City Council, subject to those five conditions that is attached to your staff report. So basically, that will conclude my staff report. The applicants are here. If you have any questions, but staff is also here to answer any questions that the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff? Seeing no questions of staff, is the applicant is present? Okay. If you want to come up and state your name for the record, and you'll have 10 minutes to make your case.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Ernie Vincent with Palm Springs Modern Construction. I reside at 7 Kern Court, Oceanside, California. I don't have an extensive statement to present. I think the staff covered it well, and I just want to say that I'm here to answer any questions that come up.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Donahue.
One thing staff didn't mention, but you've attached it to our staff report, and that is the Pedragal project was involved in a lawsuit, was it not?
That's correct.
And it looks to me as though part of the resolution of the lawsuit required that this property be reverted to acreage.
That's correct.
So we're complying with a court order, basically.
Correct.
That's correct.
I think it's important to know.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Maruzi.
I'm just curious, why would that condition be in there? Why would there be a requirement to return acreage back to its?
It had to do with the issuance of subdivision bonds, and reverting it to acreage took care of the bond issue.
I don't understand that, but I think it's probably a very good answer.
It's long and complicated.
Is it also the fact that they're going to try to return the area back to a more natural appearance by taking the wall away?
That part of the settlement was what the city was involved in, and that was basically a consideration for the city, that it was agreed that the site would be restored to as, not a complete pristine condition, but, you know, remediated and renaturalized, as it were.
Will the border of boulders along Palm Canyon be moved away slightly so it doesn't look like a wall?
I don't think the border on Palm Canyon will be moved as part of it. It's the boulder piles don't have the landscaping and the coloring north of there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Song.
So it's not in front of us right now, but you do plan to develop the site in the future?
Eventually, it will be developed. Eventually, it will be developed, that's correct.
Okay. And so therefore now it would include one parcel, the development of one parcel with more natural density, I guess? Or is that not part of our purview?
No. Yeah, this just reverts it to acreage.
Right.
This has nothing to do with any future approvals for projects.
Okay, okay.
And the project was approved as a 132-unit project, so the CEQA review that was done is good for a future project that is substantially the same, provided that there's no substantial change in circumstance.
Okay, so as far as physical, after we get this legal part done, there is no actual construction per se until you figure out what the business model is going to be for the site?
The only construction is the remediation, and the only construction that would occur after that would be after a new map is filed and building permits are issued.
Got it.
And that would all be in the purview of the city.
Okay.
If I could just add to that, essentially, this action does not entitle the property for development. If they wish to develop the property, they would have to come in with a new application and go through the standard process to do that.
Okay.
Right, and that would all be with the city.
Right.
Not as far as a CEQA review, because they have that negative mitigated declaration. But if they come in with a different project, then they would have to redo the CEQA review.
Right, but the detail is that on that first review, it was the smaller lot, the property line of that lot. Anyway, it's okay, it's okay. Thank you.
Just to add to it, any future development would be subject to our zoning code that is currently in place.
That's correct.
Or the zoning that's in place at the time that the property is developed.
Okay, thank you, Flynn.
Mr. Chair, if I may, as well as the zoning code being applicable, the city would also conduct the necessary environmental review. In this case, the city determined that this project is consistent with the prior MND for the site, and certainly if something comes up that's similar, there's a chance it might fall within the same MND, but the city will still conduct that review on an individual basis, based on the applications.
Yes, and I would just caution, I would emphasize the word "might." A 10-year-old CEQA is very old with adjacent neighbors. So is there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, is anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against the project or about the project in general? Seeing no one, did you have any rebuttal?
Oh, I would just say that under California law, the CEQA is good as long as it's substantially the same project, and there's been no substantial change in circumstance. Now, what the city might do is to have the applicant demonstrate that that's the case.
Of course.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Which they could do fairly.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I'll open it up to the commission for discussion.
I have a question of the attorney. So all the entitlements will be lost with this action, right? There will be no more entitlements? Is that correct?
That is correct. The entitlements have expired for the development.
So they have to go through the whole process again, whether or not CEQA, it's a legal question, whether or not CEQA applies and so forth. But the entitlements have been lost?
Correct.
Any more discussion on the item, or do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the project as the staff has recommended. So the motion is to approve the project.
Okay, the motion is to approve the project as recommended by staff. Is there a second to that motion? It's second by Commissioner Donenfeld, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one seems to be opposed. It passes unanimously. Thank you, and congratulations. We now move on to new business. Excuse me, before we move on to new business, there is an item 2C, and I think we're going to be asking for a continuance on that. Is that correct or not?
That is correct. Mr. Chair, on item 2C, there was an error in our electronic notification on this item, and so consequently, what I would ask you to do is to continue the item for two weeks to the May 22 hearing.
Okay, thank you. Can we have such a motion?
Accept the motion.
Okay, the motion is to continue it to May 22. Is there a second? There's two seconds. Commissioner Gardner seconded it. All in favor say aye. Okay, I hear no opposition. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we now move on to new business. And we move on to item 4A. Item 4A is a request by GHA Vibe Palm Springs LLC for a minor amendment to a final PDD to allow a minimum two-foot setback to the property line for courtyard spas and small pools at the Vibe Development located at the northwest corner of South Farrell Drive and East Barista Road. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission. So this item before you now is a minor modification, a request for a minor modification to a previously approved final development plans for the Vibe Development. So if you recall, for those commissioners that were on board in September of 17 of 2014, the council approved preliminary plan 232 for the Vibe project. And in February of 2017, the planning commission approved the final development plans for this project. So what you have, what we have today is a request by one of the builders of Vibe, precisely it's, they are called Vibe, yeah, GHA Vibe PSLLC. They are the applicants for this minor amendment, and specifically, they are asking for a reduction of the side yard setback from five foot to two feet in the property line. So if you look at the slide that's up on the monitor, that's the property line, or those are the locations of the property lines of the single-family residences. So the development standards that you approved along with the preliminary PDD and the final PDD was five feet. But as the builders informed staff, as the construction commenced, they realized that making that amendment, granting them a setback of two instead of five feet, will make that shared easement area more usable. Precisely, that location for either spools or small pools or spas where they are to be located. So in reviewing this application, staff met with the building official who opined that this would not have any effect upon the structural integrity of any building that may be located nearer to that, to the pools. Once again, because the structure, if I can just move to the ball, let me just show what I'm talking about. This is a setback here, and it doesn't call for any structure, so there is no wall, it's just the imaginary line where the property line is. That's where the setback is being requested. This is a shared easement area. This wall here is for the next building. We also reviewed the issue of privacy and determined that there are no windows or doors that is leading to this area that might impact privacy issues. And as a result of that, staff made a determination that this request is minor in nature. It will not affect the intent, the original intent of the PD, and therefore make a recommendation of approval to the planning commission. So again, my report is very brief. Staff is recommending approval based on the input from the building official and also from staff making a determination that it is a very minor amendment and will not affect the overall development. So that will conclude my staff report. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donenfeld for questions of staff.
How does moving the pool or the spool into the reciprocal easement area affect the other property owner's right with respect to area that is theirs as a matter of their easement, but it's being taken up by water in a pool?
So the way that is explained to me is that, so if you look at the courtyard area, it's mostly for the benefit of this, say, Plan 1. Plan 2 will enjoy the same benefit, and Plan 3 will enjoy, is supposed to enjoy the same benefit in this area. So it just creating additional space in this area for the use of this property. They all will have equal benefits, so if you look at the way that the site plan is laid out.
Is it legally permissible to do that since arguably, the other property owner has an easement with respect to those five feet?
The answer is yes, it is, because the pool still remains on the property to which the owner holds title. It does not encroach into the actual easement area on the adjacent property.
I see. My other question is with respect to the setback going from five to two for a spool, how does that compare to the recent ordinance that we passed with respect to PDDs? And what is the requirement with setbacks on similar construction?
That issue isn't actually addressed in the Plan Development District ordinance. In the city's zoning ordinance, it requires a five-foot setback from property lines. However, under PDDs that we've approved in the past, we've allowed a three-foot setback from the property line. This is actually one foot closer than what we have done in the past. Our primary concern was would it encroach onto the adjacent property in terms of structure? And that's one of the reasons why we have reviewed this with our building official. He is confident that a two-foot setback will still be adequate to maintain the structure on the property owner's property, and feels comfortable with the two-foot setback as proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Song?
So I have a question and a clarification. I think the property line is what you pointed out, Edward, obviously shown in dash line. But the actual exterior wall of the adjacent building-
Yes, yeah.
-is the actual limit of the side backyard.
In this case, for instance, this would be the wall of the adjacent structure, yeah, and that is still five feet away from the property line.
Correct. So in, I live in a similar development in which we get to enjoy that easement towards our property, and what you're saying is that still the pool or the spa pool still is in my property, but there's only a two-foot setback?
Correct.
And all the windows that are actually placed along that wall, exterior wall, up and high or something, so it's visually not imposing onto the swimming pool?
That's correct.
So the next sort of minor question is, do they plan to have hard surface around the spa pool, or do they plan to allow, you know, more organic landscape around that? Or is that the option of the homeowner?
I probably would defer that question to the applicant if you want to-
Why don't we have the applicant come up later? Let's just go through questions of staff at this point.
Okay, so-
But that would be, I think, what I'm hearing, just for clarification, there's two points, you know, obviously paving on your own property and paving on an easement. And that might be a legal question more than an applicant question at this point. So I think the question is, is it, can somebody, if this were to be allowed, could somebody pave on that easement and make it all hardscape on the neighbor's easement? And I guess it's how the easement would be written, is what I would assume.
Mr. Chair, yes, it would depend on how the easement is written. Generally, in reciprocal easements of this nature, there is typically a provision that would allow that type of customary use. I have not reviewed the easement, and so I cannot speak with certainty as to what conditions may or may not be in that easement. But generally, in easements of this nature, you know, there's not usually a hard backstop that would all of a sudden prevent somebody from using that space for what it would customarily be used for.
Thank you. And we can ask the applicant as well. Did you have any further questions, Mr. President? Any other questions of staff? Does anyone have questions of the applicant? Would anyone like the applicant to come forward? No, so no questions of the applicant. Okay, we're open for discussion at this point, then. Commissioner Song?
I think that the modifications are acceptable in the sense that I think from the building department point of view was the thickness of the shotcrete, concrete material that it's made for, and that within the two foot of easement is well under, lower than that dimension. So it would all survive or be located within the property's ownership. I think sort of, we're not setting a precedence that this is a PDD special situation in which I think is smartly used on how we can use side yards, so it's more beneficial to the backyard feeling for a residential unit. So we're looking at sort of case by case, and I think that's what was being done at Vibe, and we're not setting up a precedence for other projects to now use two-foot setbacks, because those will be in a different condition. So having said that, I'm bypassing and making a motion to-
I just, I don't see any other comments, so I'll just make a comment. It seems very appropriate for this PDD and this case, and it gives somebody an amenity they may not have, and I think amenities actually help property values and help your enjoyment of the property. I think as we move forward with small lots, I'm not clear on how big these lots are in the future, we might be addressed with a similar thing on our small lot type of thing. But I don't believe, because it's a PDD, we are setting that precedence at this point. So do I hear a motion?
The motion is to accept the changes that are being proposed by the applicant.
Okay, the motion has been first, and is there a second?
I make a second.
Okay, Vice Chair Maruzi made a second. All in favor say aye. Okay, no opposition again, so it passes unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, this is a time for planning commission reports, requests, and comments. Are there any reports, requests, or comments? Okay, Commissioner Song?
Flynn, would you like us to keep the extended, the continued item?
As much as I would like to be able to recycle that, we'll go ahead and print new copies for you on the 22nd.
I have a question, Flynn. I noticed that the old food court that never quite became a food court is going to become a lighthouse dispensary, cannabis dispensary. Since it's on our main street on North Palm Canyon, I know typically we don't get involved in cannabis issues, but since it's on a main street, might we still get involved before this thing goes through, or is it already fait accompli?
It's already been approved. In terms of the zoning regulations for cannabis businesses, in our commercial zones, dispensaries and lounges are permitted use. They are subject to distance separation requirements. That particular facility did require a distance separation to be approved by the city council, which was done by the city council back in December. So it doesn't require planning commission approval. The city council does have a moratorium in place looking at the separation distance issue. You will see some modifications to the cannabis ordinance in terms of the zoning regulations coming before you, probably within the next month or two.
Thank you.
Any more comments? I'll make a comment, just for those of you who did sign up for your free registration as a planning commissioner, the California Preservation Conference is currently going on over at the Hilton. If you did not sign up and you want to go see me, I may have a solution for you to learn more about preservation on a statewide basis, which is very good. Okay, hearing no more, our city council liaison is not here. Planning directors report?
I don't have any items for the planning commission. We will have our meeting on the 22nd of May. City council will be following us directly that evening. I don't believe we'll have a long agenda, so I don't think there's going to be any issue with overlap, but just wanted to make you aware that city council would also be on the same evening as planning commission.
We're doing great with the timing of meetings. Anything else? With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? So move, seconded?
A second?
And so, all right, adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.